Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, Texas. It is Tuesday, November the 23rd, 2021. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Century Jury Room at the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street here in Granbury, Texas. Today, we are pleased here to have again a very prominent minister in Hood County that's been here before. It's Pastor David Samples with the Toller Baptist Church to lead us into invocation. Pastor Samples, please.
Thank you very much. Let's pray together. Father in heaven, we are so grateful for a free country and a free county where we can come together, Father, and worship you and serve you. Lord, we pray your blessing upon this meeting today. We pray your blessing upon the leadership in our county, upon all of those that work and serve, the citizens of this county. Father, thank you for this day, and we pray that you would just go with us. Give us your wisdom. Give us your guidance. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me if you please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please honor the flag of Texas.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you all very much. We also have his backup pastors up here, Pastor Mac McMahon and his first assistant, Ms. McMahon, Sandy. Pleasure to have both of y'all here today. Today, if anybody wants to speak on any topic on the agenda, you must first fill out a public information form and hand it to Sheriff Deeds and put what item you're going to speak on on the agenda and whether you are for or against that item. So you will get a maximum of five minutes to speak on the topic unless there's more than six people, and then we'll divide the time between the people for and against that agenda item. So far, I only have one item, so please fill out the participation form and hand it to the sheriff. The sheriff will give it to Ms. Lang, and then we'll get started. Today, we also have a very special presentation, but I do not think she is here. Is that right, Sheriff? Ms. Janelle Tuuk? She's not here, is she?
She's not here.
I didn't see her anywhere, and she's not in the hall. But all of y'all may know Janelle Tuuk. She has been working on the Committee of Aging Board of Directors for over 18 years, and she's been a good, solid member. And I think that with other issues that she has going on now, she wants to retire. And the Board of Directors of the Committee on Aging wanted to give her a special presentation and make her an honorary lifetime board member. And they have a certificate here. I hope that this shows up for everybody in the community to really recognize this lady who is just an outstanding member of the community. She is also on the Regional Transportation Council. And I've had many a barbecue plate lunch, and she always gets the child plate at Hammond's Barbecue. And then we would go to the meeting there in Glen Rose, and she is just always very insightful and a very, very good person. So I will see that she does get this lifetime achievement thing. But I'd like to make a motion, just to make it doubly official here, and move that we make Janelle Tuuk a lifetime honorary member of the Board of Directors of the Committee on Aging. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, so I'm sure everybody in Hood County would agree to that. Next, we have the Service Award. And I know some of these people on this here now. First is Melanie Baird. 10 years. Hard worker. Audit department. If you can put up the 10 years with Becky Kidd, you deserve two big old medals. I mean, a big one in neon, flashing. I'm sorry.
You're getting stink eye.
That was a poor attempt at humor. Okay, Ms. Kidd?
Thank you.
Hey.
She's awesome.
Boy, she's awesome. I mean, she runs... Melanie does a great job, I will say that, and she can always round us. Now, the second one is Magdalena Corral. There he is. Sheriff Deeds, tell us about him. 15 years for the county.
Yep, and this is a guy that holds everything together with the incoming inmates and the outgoing inmates, booking them in, booking them out, keeps everything running smooth at the book encounter. He answers to Eric, and Eric's here today, but... So thank you for...
Eric, why don't you come up there with him, get on the other side of him here? This is a guy... You talk about... I want to say this about the sheriff and Eric here. For 13 consecutive years in a row, they have passed the jail standards surprise visit. And every time they called me the last three years, my heart kind of skips a beat because they've kept that jail together with duct tape and barbed wire, and we pass every year. So that's a tribute to Sheriff Deeds and to Eric Terreville, and thank you, Magdalena Corral. Good. Krista Smith. Krista Smith has only been working here for only 20 years. 20 years. Krista, congratulations on this landmark deal. That's really good. And again, if you've been working here for this lady right here, Ms. Berry, she runs a tight ship, doesn't she? So she's a pure sweetheart to work for, and I love working for you. Anyway, 20 years.
Krista's a boss in our department, and she's been an asset to our department for 20 years, and we couldn't be happier.
Next, we go to the Consent Agenda. Thank you. Yes, you will, okay? This is on seven. Going again, and this is on four. Okay? That's on item number seven. This is on number four so far. Thank you. Okay. Does any of the Commissioners wish to discuss anything or pull anything from the...
Consent.
Okay. From the Consent Agenda? No? Then would somebody please make an appropriate motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the Consent Agenda, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. I'm sorry. God, thank you. Commissioner, for the record here, Commissioner Cotton is ill today, and he's out. So we do have a quorum here for the Commissioners, but Commissioner Cotton is absent today due to an illness. Okay. Let's bring this down to Roman numeral eight. Business to be discussed in road operation is synonymous with Mr. Donald Lenny. Yes, sir?
Good morning, Judge Masengel, Commissioners. We have a public hearing to discuss and consider the approval of the following traffic regulations and take appropriate action in Precinct One. This is in the Comanche Harbor development. We'd like to establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Bay Shore Drive, Comanche Cove Court, Scenic Drive, and Waterview Drive. And also in that, we'd like to alter the speed limit of 20 miles per hour on Comanche Cove Drive and make it also at 25 miles per hour.
We're adjourning now into a public hearing to discuss the approval of the traffic regulations that Mr. Lenny has just read into the record here. So is there any discussion about these traffic regulations in Bay Shore Drive, Comanche Cove Court, Scenic Drive, Waterview Drive, or on Comanche Cove Drive? Is there any public comment about any of these that Mr. Lenny has just read into the record? What is the recommendation here of Road Ops that they...
Road Operations recommends approval of these.
Okay. All right. At this time, then, we convene back into the Commissioners' Court hearing. Does anybody care to make an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to establish a 25 mile per hour speed limit on Bay Shore Drive, Comanche Cove Court, Scenic Drive, Waterview Drive, and alter the speed limit on Comanche Cove Drive from 20 to 25 miles per hour.
Second. Okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Andrews to establish the speed limits as he stated into the record and at the various places stated, and second by Commissioner Eagle. Any discussion on any of these traffic regulations? If not, all those in favor of the speed limit regulations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Four zero. Excuse me. Four zero. Okay. Next, I understand that you're going to take over for Mr. Clint Head, Mr. Lenny.
Yes, sir. He couldn't be here this morning, so...
Okay. Now, don't expect double pay just because of this. All right. All right. What do you have?
Judge, the Development Department has received two applications for two replats, and staff is asking the court to set the public hearing for these two. Both these involve a somewhat adjustment line between these two lots on each replat. But the first one is J&amp;J Catfish and Seafood Subdivision, Lot 1R, Block 1, and Vista Oaks, Phase 2, Lot 1R, Block 2, and Precinct 2. And then we have the Stonewater Church West Edition, Lots 1R and 2R-A, Block 1 and Precinct 1. Staff recommends setting a public hearing for the December 28th Commissioners' Court meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to set a hearing on these two replats for December 28th, 2021?
So made. Second.
You talk about it in unison here. Okay. A motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to set the public hearing on the replats as stated in the record for December the 28th, 2021, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Judge.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Okay. Now, this brings us down to miscellaneous C... No! Hold it. Hold it. The paper's stuck together. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to do that to you of all people.
Sure.
(laughing) Yes, this is the lady that writes the checks and all, so I got to be nice to her. Ms. Kidd, good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. For the fiscal year 2021, court old budget, which this is the last old budget expenditures, New budget, $2,436,797.1. We have reviewed all these invoices and recommend payment, and we also have provided a list of payments over $10,000. Do you have any questions on any of this?
I do. I don't see it posted, but I just want to make sure that we're clear on the first item. Would you explain, for the purposes of transparency, the Texas County and District Retirement System, that payment amount and where that came from?
Yes, sir. We budget $3.9 million for sales tax. Any excess proceeds of sales tax can be applied for liability or to pay down debt. We're really doing well on our debt, but last year, TCDRS had a bad year, and they had increased what we're going to have to donate. So to kind of get in a position to where we don't have to come up with more and more money every budget, we will pay this upfront, and that actually decreased our liability for this year to more than what... To less than what I had budgeted, so we're in really good shape. This should carry us for several years, and I will always recommend paying a portion of additional sales tax for this purpose to keep you at 2.5% of your donated money for retirement.
So have you... I noticed on the last budget, you kind of increased a little bit your budget predictions for sales tax?
Yes, sir. It went from $3.9 to $4.1 million.
And that's because we pretty much had some pretty good overage each year?
This was a surprise with the economy and COVID and everything the way it was. This is more than we've ever had excess, so this was a nice bonus, especially since we can pay it into this TCDRS and keep our retirement plan solvent for several years to come.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Do I hear a motion to pay the bills?
I move that we pay the bills for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $3,396.78. For fiscal year 2022, $2,436,797.1.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the bills for the period of November 3rd through November the 16th in the amount of $3,396.78. And for fiscal year 2022, in the amount of $2,436,797.1. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. What else you got for us, Ms. Kidd?
Monthly reports. You've all been given advanced copies of monthly reports. We have received these in our office. We have reviewed them, made amendments where necessary, and asked that you accept these reports as presented.
Any questions of Ms. Kidd or any comments? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I move that we approve the financial reports.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the financial reports from November 1st through November 15th, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion again, carries four zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay. This brings us into miscellaneous then, and the first item is to consider and approve the establishment of the Sexual Assault Response Team consisting of 12 members. Sheriff Deeds, I guess you're the head of this deal, but it's a Senate bill that was passed that required every county in the state to form a Sexual Assault Response Team, and the sheriff has done that, and we've got the members. We've already had a meeting, and now the law allows us to even partner with another smaller county like us, and we're in talks about doing that with Somerville County. Is that a pretty good summation?
That's correct. Yeah, we're ahead of the curve, so you're ready to vote on this and honor the obligations that the state has put upon the court. We're ready to move forward. I've had a request from Somerville County to possibly go in with us. They're putting together some paperwork, so we'll bring that to court in, you know, maybe in a couple of weeks. But yep, we're ready to go and looking forward to it.
Good. And we've... And actually, we have to have it done by December the 1st, wasn't it?
Yes.
So we've got everything. So this is to comply with state law, and we actually have a good committee. And I mean, that Mary Flores, I will have to just kind of acknowledge here publicly that works in the victims for assistance for victims in the sheriff's office. God, she's such a good person, and everybody likes her, and she really is doing a magnificent job, but all the committee members are. So do I hear a motion to approve the establishment of the Sexual Assault Response Team consisting of the 12 members that we have in your work?
Yes, I move that we approve the establishment of the Sexual Assault Response Team consisting of the 12 members that are so stated on the contact list.
Second. Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the establishment of the Sexual Assault Response Team consisting of the 12 members as stated in the list, and a second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, consider and take appropriate action regarding salary of the elections administrator. Since this involves the salary of somebody, we're going to, at this point, convene into executive session, so...
Judge, can I... Are we going to need the county attorney for any reason?
Well, it wouldn't hurt to always have the county attorney.
He's in... He's over in District Court?
No, we could skip...
And he said when we get to this, if we could bump it back to the end, that...
That's exactly what we'll do. I didn't even know that. We'll do that then. So we'll go down, we'll reconsider that convening into executive, and go to item number three, and that is to consider and take appropriate action to vote for members of the Board of Directors of the Hood County Appraisal District. And for everybody here that's in here, there are some new people that are here. The Attorney General has stated that the vote must be according to the amount of taxes paid by the various entities. In the past, the entities that made up all got one vote, and so a small entity had the same amount of votes as the Granbury Independent School District. So what they've done is take $5,000, 5,000 votes and divided them proportionately, and out of that proportion, it comes out to be where the Granbury Independent School District has 3,125 votes, and Hood County has 1,290 votes. And really, those two entities probably... And the next highest is Granbury, the city of Granbury, and it has 285 votes. So in the past, that's what happened. Every entity, and some of them were not even in Hood County, like Glen Rose Independent School District, Gottlieb Independent School District, Bluffdale Independent School District. So this makes it more equitable, but it's more importantly in accordance with law as promulgated by the Attorney General's Office. So the city... I mean, excuse me, the Granbury Independent School District has cast votes that has named five candidates, and they have cast these five candidates, and might as well go ahead and state them in the record. I don't know of any reason why we can't, but it's Mark Jackson got 800 votes, Ron Sutton 700, Eddie Rodriguez 700, Brian Thomas 463, and Brooks Goodson 462. The Commissioners' Court, in our past meetings, we have listed nine people that the various five Commissioners have nominated for our candidates. Since we only get 1,290 votes, we can choose two people on the Appraisal District Board by giving each one of our candidates 645 votes. So 645 and 645 is 1,290, and that's higher than the last two candidates for the Granbury Independent School District. So at this time, I will accept nominations from the Commissioners as to who they would like to be on this. Yes, sir?
If I could add, Judge, the city of Granbury gave 142 votes to Eddie Rodriguez and 140... Excuse me, 142 votes to Ron Sutton and 143 votes to Eddie Rodriguez. So just to add that to your numbers on the top three that the school...
Yeah.
And I think technically we should make them... Entertain a motion to split the votes the way you suggest, and then choose the... You know, nominate two people.
I agree with that. So do I hear a motion to go ahead and split the 1,290 votes that the Hood County has into two votes of $645, 645 votes each? Salute. Second. Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Wilson to divide Hood County's votes into two portions of 645 votes each, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four zero. Now, do I hear a motion from the Commissioners as to which two out of our list of nine that they wish to cast? The two...
I move that we cast the 645 votes for Rick Frye and Monty Lewis.
Okay. I'll second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to cast our 645 votes for Rick Frye and Monty Lewis. Any further discussion? Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous, so there looks like the five members of the new appraisal board will be Mark Jackson, Ron Sutton, Eddie Rodriguez, Rick Frye, and Monty Lewis.
And Judge, if I could throw in, I think that it'll probably be business that they'll have to figure out, but they're going to have to... Since this is a new... You know, we're kind of starting with a clean slate. They're going to have to figure out who's going to stagger, and I think they can do that amongst, you know, amongst their own board.
I agree with that. I agree with that. They'll figure out how they're...
Just, you know, just for the public's information.
And I guess they choose their own chairman, too.
I think so, yeah.
Changes annually.
So with that, thank you all very much. So takes care of number three, caring number two. So item number four, discuss and consider approval to request a place on the historic courthouse grounds. A memorial of Hood County residents killed in action from World War I, World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and the Global War on Terror. And we have Mr. Brett Quinlan, who approached me with this idea, and I'd like for you to go ahead and explain what you have, Mr. Quinlan.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge Masengel, Commissioners. Just quickly, let me state my... I guess my mission statement is to erect...
Sir, would you give us your name for the record?
Yes, I'm sorry. Brett Quinlan.
Thank you.
I'm a local pastor also. I'm a letter carrier with the United States Postal Service, and I am a veteran of the United States Army. And I'm desiring to erect a monument on the historic courthouse lawn to honor and remember the sacrifices made by Hood County residents who paid the ultimate price for the freedom we know and love today, so that all who live in Hood County or visit Granbury may see the names of these brave heroes, that the families of these fallen will know that their loved ones who never made it home are not forgotten, and future generations will know that there is a great cost that has been paid for our liberties. In Romans 13, it states, "Render honor to whom honor is due." And this is my pitch. I know that there's a list inside the courthouse of all those who went and served, and they are all due honor. But if a family member lives outside of Hood County and they have a loved one that died from Hood County, they can't come and see their name or see that they are remembered, and, you know, sometimes the courthouse is locked and they can't see it. I think on the courthouse lawn should be a monument that represents every name of those soldiers that went to war and never made it back. I have a letter from Riley Stevens' father. He was killed in the War on Terrorism, and he describes about the last time he saw his son. And I think it would honor him and his family to see that name appear there on that monument. And I also have a letter from Ron Miller, and his father was Sergeant John Miller, who was the first casualty from Hood County in Vietnam in 1966. And he describes the last time he saw his father leave home when he was three years old, and the changes that it made to his family, his mother, watching his mother suffer and his brother suffer. And... And so, these men that went off to war and never came back, their families were changed forever. And I think we should honor them. I feel like it is something that I know a lot of other counties have done, and I believe that we should have a place where families can go and see that we honor and remember the sacrifices of that family and those lives that were lost.
You and I have gotten together, we talked about this-
Yes, sir.
And I asked you to see if there were any requirements by the state historical or by the local historical branches here, and they have given their approval and said that they were all right with it. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And you have gotten also some designs-
Yes, sir.
And some cost-
Yes, sir.
On the deal. And I would like for you to get with Jay Riley about where you think, you had told me where you think the appropriate placement should be done, and that's kind of across from General Granbury on the, that would be the southwest quadrant. Am I right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That corner where it would line up perfectly with General Granbury statue and everything would look symmetrical with courthouse, and it wouldn't change anything.
Okay. Now, the other thing is the cost of it, and there were two estimates on the thing. I think one of them was like, the best one, and looked to be the best for future, is the $47,000 deal.
Yes, sir.
But, and they want us to try to do this with donations. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any plans or what we could do, what events or whatever that we could have that would raise the money? I think it's a worthwhile cause I can't imagine anybody not wanting to honor those who paid the ultimate price. Like they said, some gave some, but some gave all, and this would be a-
Yes, sir. I, I've got two plans in place. I've talked with the VFW, they're going to have a fundraiser, the American Legion's going to have a fundraiser. But I'm actually getting 10 people. I'm going to have 10 teams, basically. Each team is to raise $4,000. That's $40,000 that we can have in place. I've already raised eight personally, just with businesses on the square, businesses that I know of that have committed to contribute towards this cause. So, I, I don't think it'll be any problem raising the $40,000, and I believe we'll have funds if you do Facebook, GoFundMe, there's a lot of other areas. I know times are tough right now, so if, if we fell short, if, if the county or if the city could make a small donation, that would be great. If not, just giving us the place to do it will be fine, and, and we've got six to eight months to raise the funds. That's how long it takes to get the granite cut. So, they're, they're behind right now, which gives us a little bit more time to fundraise, and I believe we'll have no problem raising the money.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
One question and notice, and looking at your quotes, they were from Fort Worth Monument. Did you approach the monument company here in town?
Yes, well, I didn't talk to him personally. When I called Fort Worth Monument, they actually work with them, and I, I talked with Gallaghers before a way back, but they are not, he's not actually able to handle such a big monument. And I've talked to a couple that I sent emails to in Fort Worth that, in Dallas, that said they are not constructing such large monuments at this time. The quarries are getting-
I'm just saying that we need to, you know, if, if possible, we keep it in county.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I like the idea. I think that the concept is wonderful, and when you met with me, I conceived the passion for you for doing this, and I think it's really in it. And unfortunately, I hope we don't need the space, but the way that the design is, I love the design, that you can add other names for other people that would hopefully not be killed, but should that happen on the global war on terror. So, it's a well-thought-out plan, and you should be personally applauded for all the work that you have personally put into this.
Thank you, sir.
I really do, and I think we all give him a round of applause for what he's done. Really, really has done that.
Thank you.
I guess what we do right now is, I guess we have to take it, so do we all approve a statue being erected on the courthouse lawn for a memorial to all the Hood County residents that have been killed in action from all of these wars? Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Yes, Judge, I move that we approve the request to place on the historical courthouse grounds a memorial to Hood County residents killed in action from World War I, World War II, Korean War and Vietnam War, and the global war on terror.
Second. Okay. Second by both the other Commissioners here, both Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Eagle second that motion, that we do have the right to erect a monument to those killed in action on the Hood County Courthouse Square. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is unanimously carried. Now, after approving that then, I guess the next thing is that we need a motion that you're going to, well, I guess we're, that these monuments will be built from volunteer funds. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
From donations and volunteer fundraising in the county to erect these monuments.
Yes, sir.
But if the county and city wanted to contribute, you don't have any problem with that either.
Have no problem with that, Mr. Quinlan.
Okay. Well, I think maybe, I think we should wait until see how the fundraising goes, and then if we need something, then we can come back and revisit that.
That, that would be perfect. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, again, hey, thank you for thinking of this. This is a very worthwhile deal. Thank you for all that you've done, and we'll certainly work with you. Mr. Quinlan.
Well, thank you very much. Last thing I want to add, just in closing, is that this actually started with Courts Cleveland and myself. So, I wanted to mention his name. He was in favor of this. His cousin, Dale Cleveland, Lieutenant Dale Cleveland, was killed in action overseas. So, this was important to him too, so.
Well, thank you for sharing that. You're a good guy. Thank you again. Good guy. Okay. The next item, item number five, discuss and take appropriate action to pay the additional invoices totaling $17,659.02 for rigging down old vehicles and rigging up new vehicles from Fund 55. Sheriff Dees.
Judge, Commissioners, this process for this set of vehicles we've got right now that we just got ready to go, and that's why I have these bills, this has all been in the process for well over a year. So, with COVID, it messed things up, delivery times, a lot of different things, cost a little more on parts and pieces. So, on the old pieces, we had the total cost of rigging down the old vehicles, $8,640, and then rigging up the new vehicles, $24,861.02. From a couple of years ago, there was a remainder of $15,842 in Fund 55 for doing all of this. But that was a, a figure that was set aside, you know, almost two years ago, I believe. And so, with these new bills, every year, the rigging up and rigging down of these vehicles is bid out, and the contract was awarded to Emergency Apparatus Services. So, that's who I have all these bills for. On another note, the, the vehicles that we buy, come to court and ask for, to order those, they're all ordered on a state contract, and it's just the vehicle. It's not the lights and sirens and, and all the extra, the decals, everything has to be put on after the fact. Over the years, we've looked at a couple of different ways to do it, and it's always been cheaper to buy the parts and put them on instead of finding somebody that could do it all one-stop shopping and get them to us. It was always more expensive. We might need to, and we will look at that again for these newer vehicles that are on order now. But as of right now, then the total, I've got all these invoices, so we come up $17,659.02 short that I'd come before you to ask for that money to come out of Fund 55 so we can finish paying these bills that I have.
Okay. Do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve to pay the additional $17,659.02 for the rigging down of the older vehicles that will be retained in county use and rigging up of the new vehicles from Fund 55.
Second.
Second.
Again. So, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the additional $17,659.02 for the rigging up of the new vehicles, second by both Commissioner Andrews and Commissioner Eagle at the same time. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, consider and take appropriate action to authorize the county fire marshal to enter contract negotiations with E1 to refurbish Hood County Engine 39. Fire Marshal Jeff Young, yes, sir.
Judge, Commissioners, Engine 26 is in its final steps prior to delivery. I had planned on leaving after court and flying to Florida to go do the post inspection, and then I realized it's Thanksgiving week. And as much as I enjoy Florida, I don't want to get stuck there, so I'm going to go next week. Engine 26 being almost completed means they're open for the next slot. They can't begin to give me a quote until we've agreed that we're going to do the next engine. Engine 39 is the next one that's slated for refurb, and it, it really needs it. That truck right now, when it goes into pump gear, they have to manually turn the truck off, get underneath it with a hammer to disengage the pump gear in order to get it back into road gear. I don't want to sink money into doing a repair if we're about to send it off for refurb. So, what I was coming to ask is to get authorization to negotiate up to $325,000 for the refurb of Engine 39.
Okay. Is this one of the deals that we had talked about in previous Commissioners Courts about-
Yes, sir. Originally, when we started this, we were going to do two a year, and E1 hasn't been able to keep up with that two-a-year commitment. So, we've basically just been kind of taking them as they come.
Where's Engine 26 out of? What part of-
Uh, Engine 26 is North Hood County. And so, they're, they're about to get their refurb truck back, should be back probably mid-December, which is right at their six-month deadline. And then Engine 39 is out of Crescent.
Okay. So, we don't have an actual contract yet on the deal.
Not for Engine 39, no.
Thanks to Mr. Wilson up here, we have the, the penalty clause for any type of delay that they have to pay.
Yes, sir.
So-
Yeah, and that's what delayed 26 going is that they didn't want to agree to that in the beginning, and that I told them we weren't going to send anything else until they did. So, they've agreed to $100 a day for every day they're late past their six-month period.
What's the budget timeframe for, you know, taking refurbishing Engine 39? What's that, how long is that going to take?
It would be the same. It'd be a six-month.
Okay.
We have this money in Fund 55?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'd make a motion that we, excuse me, approve the county fire marshal to enter negotiate, contract negotiations with E1 to refurbish Hood County Engine 39.
Motion been made by Commissioner Andrew to authorize county fire marshal to enter contract negotiations with E1 to refurbish Hood County Engine 39, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
Up, up to $325,000?
Yeah. Up to $325,000.
If I can add that.
Yes, sir. The, the current one right now is about $314,000, that's with the supply chain, COVID, you know, all that mess. They're, they're thinking it might be a little more than what we've got in there right now.
Okay. Well, tell them you authorized up to 325, then.
Well, I don't want to give them a figure of what I'm authorized to, because then that's what the quote will come in at.
Yeah, it'll be 324,999, right?
Right, and change, and so I just, I'd rather-
324,999, all right.
I'd rather just tell them that I'm authorized to enter in the negotiations and let them come up and tell me what the price is.
Do your best.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck. Thank you, sir. All right. This brings us to item number seven, consider and discuss for approval a $100,000 donation to Ruth's Place and a $50,000 donation to God's Food Pantry from Fund 83. We have people from the audience that would like to speak first. Steve Biggers first, and he is against this. So, Mr. Biggers.
Before I get started, Judge, I, I, you know, you're one of the sponsors honored along with, with emergency management. Can, can we tell how it came about before my time starts? And when I, let me, let me clarify this. When I talk, my timer should go. When they talk, it should stop, because you guys can talk a little long, and, and my time should be fair. So, I need to know how this came about. Please pause my time.
Well, it came about because people had asked and talked to the emergency manager, Jay Webster, about this, and other people had approached me first about Ruth's Place. And I was all in favor of Ruth's Place getting the money, because I know all the good that they have done. And when we were working, all the Commissioners are on the Hood County Hospital District Board in trying to do things about the caring for the indigent. I went down and inspected Ruth's Place, talked to the people down there. Almost everybody at Ruth's Place, I think, are volunteers. These are doctors that actually volunteer their time and do a lot. But the most impressive thing about me about Ruth's Place is that they have national attention because of the good works that they have done, and they also have been able to enter into, because of their reputation, what they've done with, with different pharmaceutical companies and have medications, sometimes as high as $2,000 to $3,000 a dosage of these medicines that they get free, that it doesn't cost anybody. It does not cost Hood County Indigent Fund or the Hospital District or anything else, that they are able to get these medicines and administer to people that have no way that they could ever pay, and these are life-saving medications. So, in looking at everything and looking at the volunteerism, when it came out, Jay approached me about it, and I said, man, for the number of people that talked me about it, I'm all in favor of it. So, that's how Ruth's Place got on for the $100,000. The second one, as far as God's Pantry, is that I do know this from talking to Jeanette from the Senior Citizens Committee and from other people that are getting food, that because of the COVID and because of the distribution process, that they're having to change their menus, and they do not have enough money for food. And I do know that being involved in the community, that our church provides foods for our services, and that the way things are gone and, and in various activities that I've been in, that if you say that there's going to be food at a organization or at a charity or at a meeting on a deal, it's always so well-attended, because simply, food is just scarce. I was talking to Commissioner Andrews about it yesterday, that there is a church, I forgot the name of it, passed by it every day, that they give boxed food away every Tuesday from 1:00 to 4:00, every Tuesday. There are just a lot of people. I've talked to Dr. Glenn, Superintendent of the Granbury Independent School Districts, and the people that he has to feed, and what he has fed during the COVID situation, is that there are so many children, especially here in Hood County, that are below the poverty line. We've got a very affluent population that food, no one ever thinks about food, and that's some people that are really below it. And then in my job as being a juvenile judge, they say that most of the kids get into trouble between 3:00 and 6:00 when their parents, both parents are working, and there's no food. And they're just out roaming the streets and have nothing to do. And we've all raised teenagers, or most of us have, and they're hungry all the time anyway. But then if you don't have food to give them and there's nothing to eat, that's kind of desperate. And actually, I'm for one, that we have so much abundance, we waste so much food in the United States, that I would like to feed everybody in the United States. I'm talking about children in Appalachia, and I'm talking about kids in, in these urban cities and stuff. I'd like to feed everybody. I used to go dove hunting down in Argentina with some people, and one year we went down there and people- there, and people were selling bread on the side of the roads. And I said, this is my last time in Argentina. You've got these men down here that are making and selling kind of snacks like fried bread because they have no jobs and the government's not giving them any money, and they've got kids, and these kids are coming up to them and saying, Daddy, I'm hungry. And you take a good man, and his kids are telling him he's hungry, you take a good man, and he'll do desperate things that he otherwise wouldn't do. I'm not a welfare state. I'm for less government and everything else, but we've got food, and if there's money that we can have to pay for food, to gift to food, I'm not talking about gift cards, cell phones, clothing, and nothing of that, but for food, for somebody to eat so they have something to eat and they're not concerned about it, I'm kind of for that. I'm not familiar with God's pantry, but somebody had come up to Jay, and he told him, I wish he were here, but he is on medical leave right now, and he just saying, and I, Commissioner Andrews came by me yesterday, and I told him, we're getting some more money, and I'd be in favor of any organization that was charity and giving food, if it truly was just going to people that really did need the food to feed their families. I don't want anybody resorting to any kind of desperate measures about feeding. So Ruth's Place, I just can't believe that anybody would have any opposition to giving money to Ruth's Place because of the good that they do, how much relief they give the county, their national reputation, but more importantly, the drugs that they can get from Big Pharma that they give out free. So that's the $100,000 for Ruth's Place, and there's somebody here, I think, Ms. Green, are you here? Yes, you're here to talk about God's pantry, aren't you?
No, sir, I was just...
Oh, that's, I met you there. Did you like what I said about that? I was so shocked when I walked in there and you all showed me about that because from the outside, it doesn't look as big as it is on the inside. I remember you now from you showing me around and the doctors that came up there and talked to me. So that's it. I don't know, is there anybody here from God's pantry? I don't know, I don't really know anything about that organization, but Jay said that it was a good organization. So that's what I know about those two. So you have your five minutes.
Thank you, Judge, and I agree. I totally agree with what you're saying. And Ruth actually does a food pantry thing. They do food. I believe you guys do food, too. And please understand, I am not coming as a Grinch here at all, but I'm taking issue with the fact that you're saying Jay came to you and said, it's a good organization, let's give them money. So back in August, on July 27th, I was standing up here saying, why are we giving money to the Art Foundation? Because your friend Bob Cook picked up the phone to call you and said you wanted money for the Art Foundation on an award. So do we have a process that's fair and equitable to all the nonprofits in this county? Last night, I did a quick search. You can go on taxexemptworld.com. In Hood County, there are 492 nonprofit organizations with a total of $90 million, $90,671 in assets and an income of $42 million plus, just in Hood County. So people are giving, and people are donating, and people are doing those things. My problem is with the process. There was a budget for this money, this super money we got from the Fed government on American Rescue. I've not seen the budget. The budget's not publicized. I haven't seen it. I don't know where it's going. And then you're having yourself or Ruth, are people calling you, Judge, for money or calling Jay? So we need to have like an oversight committee or a workshop or an application, very much like they did during the COVID time, when businesses wanted to apply for the money from Chamber, how they got through that. So there needs to be an application there. And with Ruth, once again, I'm not trying to be the Grinch, but on this particular website you can go to, Ruth's Place has assets of a half a million dollars, income of $100,000 plus, revenue of $100,000 plus. They had a fundraiser early this year, $70,000 plus. I'm not trying to be the Grinch. I'm just saying, they make money. They do money. They have people volunteer. So is this a wise way for us just to turn around and say, let's give it here because I like these people, or I go to church with these people, let's give it here? Because my church has a car ministry, and I belong to the Prayer Task Force here that are both 501(c)(3)'s. We could use the money to build a building for our car ministry. Prayer Task Force is trying to do a crusade that I think you're involved in, Judge, after the first of the year. We could use the money. So who's picking and choosing these people? We just need to be fair about that. That's the big thing that I have, and there should be an oversight, a workshop, an application, something that people can fill out to say, are they warranted? Not just say, Jay, say, oh, I know that guy. Yeah, that's good. And quite frankly, when you look at God's Place, they're not listed on a nonprofit listed in Hood County. They're not on there at all, anywhere. They're associated with the church that's there, but they are not listed as a nonprofit at all. And they do good things. They have the little boxes all around the county. People put food in, and they pick up the food. So I have to question, are they really a 501(c)(3)? Are we giving it vis a vis through the church? And that even opens up a little bit more of a controversy. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Can I clear something up? Ruth's Place was my idea in the very beginning. That was my idea because I've worked with Helen Best for a long time when she worked with Christmas for Children. I knew what they did. I knew what the need was there. I knew that this organization was awesome. They start teaching these children to read. They get the parents involved, and this young lady will come up and tell more about it, but that was me because I knew them.
Again, it's one person making the decision where the money goes.
No.
One person.
It wasn't one person.
You're just saying it was you, Beth.
I said it was my idea. They're voting on it now.
I understand. There should be an oversight committee for this.
Well, now, I would like to say one thing. I went and visited with Patricia there at Ruth's Place yesterday, and the state mandates that the county take care of indigent health care. And Ruth's Place stands in that gap with a lot of our indigent health care, and they save the county a significant amount of money in dealing with some of that health care for the indigents. Now, as it was explained to me, they don't, they only have MDs there, they don't have specialists. So if someone needs to see a specialist, if they're just there for insulin or, you know, albuterol, those kind of things, they get these medications. They also, and I hope I'm not stealing all your thunder, I don't know what your prepared remarks are there, but I know Ruth's Place went in to get a pharmaceutical license so that they could get a lot of these pharmaceuticals that they can then pass on to folks for the indigent part. Now, that is state mandated that the county has to fulfill that obligation, and especially over the last couple of years, they've been busier than ever, of course. So as far as, you know, some funds going to Ruth's Place, I personally don't have an objection to them. The other one, we'll deal with that in a minute, so, sorry.
Okay, Ms. Green, would you like to come up here and address the Commissioners' Court? Which, by the way, this is the oversight committee right here, these five gentlemen. One's absent today. We have to say right now, we bring it up, and anybody could say, and I told Commissioner Andrews yesterday about this God's Food Pantry, I said, if there's any other organization here that feeds people, that needs money, and the money goes for food to feed families, I'm for it. You bring them, you hear about it, you bring it, we'll put it on the docket. And this oversight committee, known as the Commissioners' Court of Hood County, will either vote for it, and they'll get the money, or we'll vote it down, and they won't get the money. Okay? So that's the oversight committee. So it has to start someplace. So, yes, Ms. Green?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Sorry for not recognizing you because I was so in awe of looking at your place there the last time. I mean, really. Please...
And I just wanted to come to you today just to thank you for just considering us for donations. We have two facilities, an outreach center out in Oak Trail Shores, and we have a clinic off of Crawford Avenue. Our clinic has been in existence since 2009. We have the ability to provide primary care, medical services to over 800 current patients and growing. Because of the pandemic, we've been inundated with people who have lost their insurance, lost their jobs, and since we serve only uninsured residents of Hood County, you know, we've seen a big influx of patients. So we provide medical care. We provide vision care through Granbury Eye Clinic. We have a pharmacy license, like you mentioned, and if we can do the primary care, and then if they need specialists like surgeons or oncologists, then we refer them over to the Hood County Indigent Program for that piece of it. But we do provide medical care Monday through Thursday. We have pediatricians, internal medicines, they're all volunteer, nurse practitioners, so they all volunteer their time. And we never shut down during the pandemic. We continued to go into emergency mode and went telehealth for that facility and just continued to work through that. Our outreach center is located in Oak Trail Shores. Right when the pandemic hit, we were set to open a brand-new building that has two classrooms, a kitchen, going to have a playground donated by Home Depot. But because of the pandemic, we had to go virtual after-school program as well and emergency distribution for food pantry. Right now, we have a food pantry on Tuesdays, but during the pandemic, we went five days a week emergency food distribution throughout the county and especially in the neighborhood out there. We took a little time this summer to restructure our outreach program to work in conjunction with GISD to look at the reading issues with students. So we closed our outreach center for a couple of months at the first of the school year, and on November 15th, we opened again fully, but we restructured it so that we are primarily a reading mentoring program to start. We start out with kindergarten through first and second grade, and we take the students at Bacchus Elementary who are bused to our neighborhood out in Oak Trail Shores, and we are partnering with the teachers at Bacchus to look at those kids that are high-risk and who also need help with the English language. And we have set a program in motion to address those reading concerns and help those kids out. We're using the GISD metrics to see what a difference, what kind of a difference we can make with those students in increasing their reading abilities, and we'll work with them closely throughout the years. This is a long-term plan that we've just set in motion, and so we also have the capacity to take up to 50 students now, whereas before, we could only take 14 or 15. So we're very excited about that. In conjunction with that, we're also, with our medical director, Dr. Romeo Bouchon, we're looking at incorporating the whole family into our outreach program, where we'll be looking at literacy for the adults because even a lot of our patients at the clinic, they cannot read or write. So they have a hard time with their medications and their patient education, so we're going to incorporate that piece into the outreach as well and look at healthy cooking classes where we can teach people how to cook healthy foods on a budget. So, you know, that'll be part of our piece as well. So we just look forward to just a growing couple of years, over the next few years, in expanding all the programs that we can to provide care for those that are most at risk in our county. So I definitely thank you for consideration of donations. As you know, we do not receive any federal funding. We run 100% on donations. So thank you very much.
Well, y'all do need the money, don't you?
Yes.
What is the name is the husband-wife physician team? I know Dr. Romeo is one of your doctors, and there's...
And then Rick and Wendy Bunnell.
Yes.
They're our pediatricians, two of our pediatricians. We have three.
Boy, they do a fabulous job.
Yes, they do.
You're really, really...
I get it.
Well, good. Thank you for coming down here. Okay?
I'd like to also say, back to the indigent, the hospital district, the amount of money that we pay every year to take care of indigents is around $1.1 million, somewhere in that ballpark for this past year. I would consider Ruth's Place actually a payment for services for what they do with our indigent care by taking more of that out of the requirement for the county to pay to deal with those indigents. So that's my say on that. Can we split this up into two motions? Because, you know, we sat, like you said a couple of times, we had a discussion on the other one, and I feel a little differently on that one. You know, one of the things that seems to be just perhaps inadvertently nefarious with this money is we've gotten into a situation that can be said that the government's brought about a lot of this by shutting down businesses, closing down non-essentials and all that, and then they give us this bucket of money and say, go make that right with this money. And that's, like I said, it may not be intentionally that way, but that's not the system that we're all looking for. You know, I fall back to the quote from, well, a story from Davy Crockett when he was out campaigning, and Congress had just voted to give a bunch of money to several families whose homes had burned. And Davy Crockett came up to this old farmer, and he was saying, hey, I'd like you to vote for me. And the farmer said, I'll never vote for you again. He said, you gave those people my tax money, and it wasn't yours to give. And it's, I've lost sleep over this, and like I said, we sat and talked with the judge. I just don't believe that it's right for government to take from one to give to another. This money can be used to ease the tax burdens and other ways on the citizens of Hood County, and I'm opposed to giving it to a food pantry. That's...
I'm opposed to giving gift cards and cell phones and clothing and other stuff, but giving food to somebody so they're not hungry, where there are kids and old folks that, I've delivered meals on wheels, and I've seen what they lived in and the food that, I'm sure that was the only food that they ate that day. And I personally, I don't mind my tax dollars going to just feed somebody. I'd like to feed the world if I could, but I'd like to start here in the United States and feed, like I said, inner-city kids and Appalachian kids and kids like that, so when they go to bed that night, they wouldn't be worried about. And I've talked to kids that were worried about what we're going to eat the next day, and that bothers me. So that's just a difference of opinions, apples and oranges, and that's why we're all here, and everybody's got to vote. So we will take it separately. So do I hear a motion about approving...
Excuse me, Judge. Can I throw in a couple of cents?
Yes.
First of all, I agree with Commissioner Andrews on the situation with Ruth's Place because as a board member on the hospital district board, we have a duty for indigent care, and right now, we are faced with an issue of sometime in the near future, two, three years possibly, that we're going to have to reinstate a hospital tax which does not exist right now. So as far as Ruth's Place is concerned, they've been very good at helping with the indigent issues that we've had. My, but I agree with Mr. Biggers on the process. I would have loved to have had a workshop where these great folks from Ruth's Place could have come up and told us what they just told us, and the God's Food Pantry, if those folks could have come in and we could have invited the public in here to talk about all this. My whole issue all along with this has been the process. And by the way, in a roundabout way, you're getting some federal funding with this $100,000 because that's where it came from. So, you know, again, I'm certainly aware of the, and applaud Ruth's Place for the great work you guys do, and I have no issues with you guys getting donations from the county beyond the point of the process here. I think we need to be, in my opinion, we should have been a little more transparent, open, had some public input from other people. That didn't happen. And so with that said, again, I guess this is a precursor that we've agonized over at the hospital board meetings once a month, is that, by the way, the public's welcome to come to, is that sooner or later, we're going to run out of money with the hospital district, and we're going to have to look at, you know, looking at a one- or two-cent tax to put back on for the, as a reliant item to the taxpayer, which I hope, I think that we're coming to that. So this may, this help with Ruth's Place may buy us another year, who knows?
Commissioner Eagle, I'd like to add to that. What I had brought up was that we have them basically kind of apply and tell us what their needs were. That's what I wanted to see from all of them.
Yes, me, too.
Moving forward, I suggest that... Moving forward, I suggest that. When we want to give to charitable organizations, have them talk to us about what they do and what their needs are.
I think-
That's what I had brought up.
I think that'd be great, so that we've got something on, we've got a video record of who came up here and what they asked for and why they needed it. So, again, that's, but I'm not decrying anything that you got with you guys. So we gonna split the vote, or what are we gonna do?
Yes, we're gonna split the vote. That's what I'm saying. Any other discussion? So, do I hear a motion concerning approval of $100,000 donation to Ruth's Place? I move. And motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve $100,000 donation from Fund 83 to Ruth's Place. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor of giving $100,000 donation to Ruth's Place, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries for zero. Now, do I hear a motion that a $50,000 donation be made to God's Food Pantry from Fund 83? I still move. So there is a motion made by Judge Massengill to make a $50,000 donation to God's Food Pantry from Fund 83. Is there a second? No second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Okay, that brings us then to discuss and take appropriate action regarding voting precinct nomenclature and numbering in Hood County.
Judge, I put this on the agenda for, for us to come back, circle, God, I don't want to use that term.
Don't do it.
To come back, to come back to this issue, we've recently, as many of you may know, that we've redrawn the precincts for commissioners, constables, JPs. And we had to do, we had to create four quarter, quarters of the county and try to get the population as close as possible. But we didn't get a chance to take care of voting precincts. We have voting, 15 voting precincts in the county, and the law states that if you have a voting precinct that goes past 5,000 registered voters, you have to split it. Well, based on the latest census and the population growth that we've had, we have actually have two voting precincts that have gone north of 5,000 registered voters. Precinct 10, which is in Commissioner's Wilson's precinct, and Precinct 16, which is primarily Pecan, and Commissioner Cotton's precinct. So we, our duty is to split those up to get them below 5,000. So, that's why I put it on here. Hopefully, we can get that done today so that the elections administrator can be given the information and send out new voter registration cards by the end of the year. That's the goal.
Hey, Mr. Wilson, since you have a plan, since, can you, basically, you know, in Voting Precinct 10, you know, my, my plan is that we leave, make De Cordova Incorporated City a standalone voting precinct, move the-
So the two lawyers are on the phone?
Okay, okay, good. All right.
Hey, Bob.
My plan is to move Montego Bay from Voting Precinct 10 to Voting Precinct 14, and then De Cordova City be a standalone voting precinct, and then all of the other entities that are currently in Voting Precinct 10 become the new voting precinct.
Number 10B.
You know, 10B whatever, you know, it may be, but Montego Bay goes into voting, current voting precinct 14, and that will not affect their numbers. De Cordova City has a standalone voting precinct 10A, if you will, and then the remainder of what's currently voting precinct 10 becomes 10B or the new nomenclature that's established.
Does Mr. Bass, Bass, or I think, does he have any comment on what Commissioner Wilson has suggested?
This is Bob Bass. If I could share my screen with you, I think it might help a little bit.
Can you turn it off?
Turn it off.
I cannot.
All right, so your proposal, De Cordova, do you have a proposed number or date? It'd be like box 10B.
Montego Bay has 201 registered voters.
I'm sorry, we've got so much-
That says, yes, the information from Secretary of State's office.
Could you say that again, please?
Montego Bay has 201 voters in it, is what he said. That's the area-
It moves that into, you know, voting precinct, current voting precinct 14, which is currently sitting at 3,788. So that would put them right at the $4,000.
All right, I'm still on number 10. Do you want to make the city of De Cordova separate voting box from 10? Is that correct?
Called for De Cordova precinct.
I stand alone voting precinct, yes, yes.
And do you have a number or a name, if you want to call it-
That number precinct 10, or make that 17?
Yeah, I can leave that one 10, and then, like I say, Montego Bay goes into- And then the remainder of what's currently voting precinct 10 becomes 10B, or however we end up defining that.
Yeah, let's just go with 17, because there's no robbery.
And I agree.
All right, as I understand, 10 includes all of the city of De Cordova. This, this line, if you can watch the math, is what I'm showing to be the boundary of 10. And that involves Crescent, comes down, and this is a boundary change here based on the redistricting that needs to be accommodated. But all of this area, with the exception of De Cordova, would remain to be 10 or 10B, and the city would be 10, right?
Right. Or 17, and the city would be 10.
All right, if I start selecting, then making a new district to be known as 10B.
Are we gonna call that 17? Yeah, Bob, just call that 17.
Well, I'm confused. This-
Line's not exactly right.
Now, 42, how many people live in Crescent? Do you know, roughly?
I don't know that there's, it's not, not that many, because you've got four counties.
Hear me? There, as far as Hood County is concerned, not that many, less than, I would say, less than 500.
So it's not affected, but if you go right up to the city limits of De Cordova, this area that I've highlighted is in precinct 10, or voting box 10, at the present time. And under 42.007 of cities over 10,000, you should not include territory in the block. So I would recommend, in the same, in the same voting box, it's inside the city and outside the city. So I would recommend that you make this part of Granbury part of box 14, and make this area outside of Cordoba. You want to call it 10B?
17.
I'm sorry?
17, 17.
Okay, so this will be box 17, correct?
Yes. There was, the precinct line is a little bit off down there, that's very south. Move your cursor up just a little bit, down. You see that little part, that, that little triangular piece that sticks up? Go to the right a little bit, the right?
Right there?
East? Yeah, right. I don't know if he can see that. Go, go east and north just a little bit, right there where that little dip is. Now, go to, go to the east just a little bit more, right there where the jump, yes, that little part right there, that little triangle right there is in precinct 2, Commissioner precinct 2. We changed that boundary on the last call. So that little corner is in precinct 2.
There you go.
So the red line's actually a little bit off there.
Okay. I'm wanting to make sure I don't have any isolated census blocks.
So Bob, are you saying that now the city of Granbury, we can't have a voting precinct that encompasses city limits and not city limits?
Well, there is a catch-all that allows the commissioner's court to declare that if it's impossible to create a voting box that includes both urban and rural voters, inside the city, outside the city, they can make an exception. But normally, the 42.007 of the education, or the election code requires you to segregate municipal voters from unincorporated voters, so that when you administer the elections for city elections, you're not, you're not allowing unincorporated voters to vote in a city election.
Well, that's not how we're set up now. We just crossed that 10,000-person mark, so.
Yeah, so Granbury's now slightly above 10,000 by about 900 people, so it falls into that statute now.
So we've got to redo all that also. Because I don't, I don't think we fit the ground with any exceptions on that.
So, I clicked something in the process there that kind of screwed this up. Hang on just a minute. I need to take the city out, and it will retain voting box 10.
Huh?
Can you not just click on everything in the city limit and just make that a new precinct?
All right, I'm getting ready to assign this area that's highlighted, this is all of the remainder of 10, as box 17, correct?
Yes.
I want to make sure before I click the button, because I'd have to manually undo it all. Is that correct?
No, that, down there, that little bump that we fixed on the bottom went back the other, yeah, there.
Take the-
That's part of, two, two, precinct two.
All right, so with that changed, are you ready to assign all of these blocks to a new box 17?
What about the city limit? I don't want to get into a huge can of worms, though.
I'm sorry?
The city limit, Granbury city limit's over there on the very eastern edge of that-
Right there?
Well, it's on the western, yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, that part that's in the red, is that-
Well, that's in box 14 as it is, but you're taking a part of that into 17. And like I say, my recommendation is you not do that. Did you leave the city of Granbury out of box 17?
We're gonna have to adjust that in every precinct, because I think every precinct's got part of the city of Granbury in it, that city limit. Is that what you're saying? We're gonna have to fix that in every, every commissioner precinct?
So I believe that, I believe that this, this blue-shaded area shows the city limits of Granbury.
Right.
And so I would not have that as part of the plan myself.
Do, I guess the question I'm asking is, do we now need to make every portion of the city limits its own voting precinct and separate it from the county precincts?
Well, I think you could join in a voting box, this box 14, as it's presently constituted, has part of Granbury in it.
Yes.
You could have a 14A that's part of this Granbury, and 14 is the rural part. You could have a 14A that's part of, is Granbury and 14 is the rural part. But it would require, you know, this, there's probably a fairly decent population in there, but I don't know, I'm not, I didn't do the redistribution of it. If y'all are ready for me to assign that area to Box 17, I'm ready to do it, but I need to get a confirmation of that.
I think yes.
Yes.
I'll make that motion, if we need to make a motion.
I'll say.
That's 17, right?
Precinct 17. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries forward to zero.
All right, that area now is Box 17. Yes.
One other thing we had talked about doing was to designate these, with the nomenclature of, the first number in the nomenclature of a three-digit numbering, as the Commissioner's precinct. In other words, that's in Precinct Number, Commissioner Precinct 3, so that should be 317, is that a problem? Now, with all the voting precincts, and Commissioner Precinct 3 would start with the number 3.
If I wish I'd have known that before I signed it as 17, because now I'm going to have to go back and redo it as 317. I mean, is that how you want to do it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. That was what they...
I'm sorry, say that again, please, what do you want me to do? You would want to make District 10, 310, District 17, 317, 14, 314.
Right, right.
And 13, 313.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I can do that. It's going to take quite a bit of time, because you're going to want to do, redo every voting box in the county that way, I assume.
Yes.
Yes.
And every time you redraw boundaries, you're going to have to do something similar on the boundaries that are changed. So every 10 years, you'll be renumbering a lot of your precincts, but that's your choice. Now, let me address a couple of things here. This area right down here, that red line shows you moved that area into Precinct 2, right?
Yes, yes.
So this area used to be in 17, but now it ought to be as part of 11 or 16. But this is Pecan Plantation, is Pecan Plantation incorporated or unincorporated? Is Pecan Plantation incorporated as a city, or is it just a subdivision?
Unincorporated.
I can't understand, is it incorporated?
Unincorporated.
Unincorporated. So you could join this area with Pecan Plantation, this yellow area between the red line and Box 16. That area needs to be part of 16.
Right.
Right. 16 is over 5,000. 16 is 5,800 or something like that now, so we're going to have to split that.
Well, it could be split along maybe a, you know, I don't know, north to south, east to west, but this area in yellow needs to be, it's part of 17 now.
Right.
Right.
So it needs to be taken out of 17, which is up here now. Right? I'm just asking, where does it, where do you want it to go?
Yes, that would need to be part of either 16 or the new...
18, yeah.
Yes, yes.
That'll be in 18.
All right, so I'm going to...
All right.
All right. That you want to divide 16 down this roadway here? How do you want to divide 16?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Down that roadway and the, the, the main east-west road going through there.
Monticello Drive looks to be this primary divider, north to south. Or do you want to divide it east to west?
He wanted to do with Monticello and then manage the rest of the other side.
All right, if we went in and took everything east or west of Monticello,
All right. All right. Right there, right there. To... I clicked that last box. And he was wanting to do north of Wedgefield right there. So that road that you got running east-west right there, yes.
That, that, that correct?
Okay. Okay. So, back to that, should we name one of these six? And just combine five to six, because all, the intent and purpose of five and six is on precinct right there. Combine them, only plus 2200 or something like that. Is, is, is...
Is this okay?
Along the other side of the lane, everything up there in the north is supposed to be part of that precinct also. North and, north and, north and east.
Well, if you don't include that, you're going to have this isolated area that has no connection with the rest of your box. Now, I don't know, are there bridges across the river right there?
Uh, it's only, it's only where you're lying, because there are...
I really can't understand a lot of the comments, it's too much echo.
Okay, yes. Okay, yes, that's... That is a bridge across right there.
Right here? Like that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, what are you going to call this one, what number does it get?
Uh, that would be 10. 206 or 218?
Where are we going? 218.
218.
All right, 218. Now, what you're, you're not, you're not seeing the same color, because I've got towns turned on, if I turn that off, everything defined by this blue line is in that voting box. Now, you want to want this area defined as 216?
Okay.
Yeah, crap. Sorry. I was not paying attention and I put the same area back into, all of that into 218, so I've got to go back through and select a new district and do it over again. My fault. If you're not careful doing this work, you have to do it over, so that was only... So this, you wanted this num, this one, this, this would be 2, what, 218?
216.
216. Correct?
Yes.
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 All right, 216 and 218. All right. We need to, I'm going to probably recommend that you allow us to work on the rest of the map, but there are some other areas that need some attention. I'm going to turn the city layer off for a while. Anywhere you see this, this bright red line, that's where you've made a change. This line right here, I'm going to turn the streets off as well. So, there's not any population there, but that used to be part of Box 11, but it's now, should be part of Box 103. Correct? So, Box 103, be labeled, renamed as 103 and take that block in. It's no longer in 11. There's also an area right here. See this red line? That now marks the line between Commissioner Precinct 4 and Commissioner Precinct 1. If I ask you at fourth box, is it a li, old former box, is it aligned with, it says that this area used to be part of Box 4? And this area also used to be part of Box 4. So this area that's now labeled as 4, meaning that's where that territory came from, needs to be realigned with what would become 101.
Yes.
Does everybody understand that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
And this would, this area over here would probably be 404.
Correct.
And then 409, 408, so forth and so on. There's another area right here. This used to be part of Precinct 13 and Precinct 3. It's now been aligned with Precinct 1. So again, this group of population would need to go over into 101.
Yes, right.
Right.
And... We've talked about this area, we've talked about that area, this area. So what I would propose to do, it's going to take most of the day, I say most of the day, it's going to take an hour or more to make the numbering change where they all have a leading digit of the precinct they're aligned with. It's, you know, we're going to have to basically click on every census block in the whole map. But we can do that, but it's going to take some time. I don't know if y'all want to watch it happen, or how you want to do it. Are there any other processes that need to be split? You said 10 and 16.
Okay.
We've done that.
Bob, we're going to convene into an executive session to discuss one item while y'all do that. Is that all right?
I think so, yes, sir. Yeah, just let us know, feel email us when you're ready to have us join. We can go ahead and drop out now.
Okay. So you want to drop out?
Yeah, I can do that. Okay, we can do that. Yeah, that little bump right there, you want in precinct two.
Yes, yes, yes. There's no precincts.
It needs to go into 218.
Yes.
The problem is, this is a separate map from your commissioner's map. I've got to go to the commissioner's map and make that change, but I, I know, I, that red line tells me I've got to deal with it. So it'll take a little bit of time and we'll email you when we're ready for it to come back up. Is that all right?
Yes.
Sure.
All right.
Okay, so the next step is that we're going to get this new map from you, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, we're going to sign off and then convene into executive session for the last item. Okay, so can you take care of that? Drew and Owen?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Gradik, in all this excitement down here, I overlooked you. All right. Oh, you wanted to address eight also.
The comment was, I was hoping because of the confusion of, of voting precincts and commissioner's court precincts, maybe it could be a change in nomenclature in one of them, but it's general.
Oh, okay. Usually I speak loud enough, it doesn't matter. It's hard for them to understand the distinction, but, uh, County Attorney, uh, Mills indicated that that's designated by law, so I guess y'all may not be able to change it. I'd like to see it as Commissioner's Court District, one, two, three, and four, to remove that confusion.
That's what we just did.
Oh, okay.
Every one of them will begin with, the first number will be what commissioner's precinct they're in, and the next numbers.
I guess that'll be more understa-
Will be what voting precinct they're in.
Okay, and I support that.
That's good. That's what was, you know, Michelle has made that, the last election administrator had made that suggestion on two different occasions before us here, so, okay. So we're going to convene now, yeah, well, first, you also got speaking time on number two before we convene into executive session about.
And there I'll be even briefer.
Who was taking?
I'll use the, the term that we get what we pay for. I hope that we will provide a sufficient salary to get the quality of election administrators as we have had previously.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're convening now into executive session. Let the record reflect that we are reconvening into Commissioner's Court here at 11:29 a.m. And after being in executive session, do I hear an appropriate motion?
As I move that we approve the increase in salary for the election administrator to the amount that we discussed in executive session.
And that you make the proper budget line amendments to pose that?
Yes, to add the proper budget line amendment for that.
Can you please state what the number is?
Please.
The audience was not in executive session.
Forty million dollars.
Seventy thousand dollars per annum. And you have no problem finding, oh, well, you will be able to find that money in the budget, it's kid. About that, okay. Is there any? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll say.
Okay, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries at four zero. Good. All right. Thank y'all all. That's the end of everything except signing of the documents, right? Is that, is that it?
Oh.
We've done all that.
Do we need to get them back on here?
No, they just said they were going to do it in accordance with our, they're going to email us, what I understood to say.
We got to vote on that one?
Well, what are we going to say? Vote on what?
Think we table it till we get the actual documents in hand?
Yeah, how about that? Or? Yeah, I want, you want to go ahead and say that, till we table it, until we get it and approve it and look at it?
So to conclude this, we're, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to table the renumbering of the, uh, voting precincts until we get the information back from the attorneys down in Austin. Second.
It must have been made in second to table the renumbering of the precincts until we get the map back with the proper numbering and nomenclature back on the voting precincts. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four zero. All right. Thank everybody. Have a good Thanksgiving.